Good to see each and every one of you here today for our workshop. We have these workshops and try to get a few things took care of. Supervisor Smith is not here. She had a fall and injured herself. She did a good job, too. So she's going to, well, we'll take care of that in just a moment, but she'll be remoting, will be remoting. So this, I'll go ahead and call a meeting order at this time. And Supervisor Tatum will do the invocation and Supervisor Quinn will do the pledge of allegiance. Let's all stand, please. Tim?
It's good to see everyone here today. Let's pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, just thanking you, praising you for all you do for us. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to meet here together and conduct a portion of the county's business. Father, we pray that everything that we say and do will be according to your will and pleasing in your sight. And as we complete this meeting, Lord, I pray that everything that is done and said will have good consequences for the fine citizens of Franklin County. And, Lord, we just pray that you'll continue to look after us and bless us. In Jesus' name I pray and ask it all. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Okay, gentlemen, do any of you have any additions, amendments, or deletions, deletions to the agenda? And if there's no changes, then it should be approved as it's presented. All right, as I was telling you earlier, Supervisor Smith cannot attend today, and she's asked to remote in via telephone, given a recent injury that she's had. So I'll need a motion for this in a second.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to allow Supervisor Smith to take part remotely.
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote on that, please.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
All right. Before we get into our meeting, while you're getting Ms. Smith on the phone, Mr. Carter, do your staff have an update on the question that I asked that we discussed about a month, maybe two months ago, about the schools getting it coming as a request once a month?
As for Mr. Chairman, so what we do know is that there can be, of course, appropriation for the school board budget by category. Those categories are prescribed as to what falls within those. That is based on the state reporting. As far as the frequency of appropriation, we're continuing to research that. We've reached out to other localities. We have not found another locality that does appropriate less frequently than annually. But logistically, we've also asked Mr. Quinn to look at that as to what that would be for between the adoption and appropriation and what might trip a public hearing every time we may want to appropriate money for the school system. So he was researching that and should have some answers for us, hopefully, by the end of the week. We talked to him a little bit earlier today. So right now, the only thing we've been able to find is there are localities that appropriate by category, but they all appropriate annually. They do not do less frequently than that. That's what we've been able to find.
Green County hasn't responded?
They have not. We've tried multiple times over the last two or three weeks, and they have not responded. So I will, I will reach out one more time, Mr. Chairman.
Does that prompt any more questions from any of the other board members?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. All right, have we got her on the phone?
Um, I just re-sent her the link. I just re-sent her the Zoom link.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So she's not on yet.
Okay. You let us know, please, when she's on. All right, welcome, Dr. Sears and Mr. Terry here today and for probably some questions that hopefully that we can talk about and work out on our budget. And that's where, that's where we're at at this time. So is anybody, any of the supervisors got any kind of an opening statement they want to make? Anything to say prior to any questions or anything? Anybody? All right, Sid, go ahead, Dan.
I would just say thank you very much for coming in during the school break to meet
Having trouble getting hooked up?
Yes, I think they're re-sending her the link again, a third time.
I hate to start without her. We probably ought to give it a couple more minutes.
Yeah, I think they were going to try her cellphone as well.
I'm sorry.
I think they were going to try to call her cellphone as well.
Okay. There she is.
She's on.
She's on now.
Ms. Smith, can you hear us? Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Loud and clear?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, we're getting ready to start then.
Thank you.
All right, again, I want to welcome Dr. Sears and Mr. Terry here for the Franklin County Public Schools regarding the proposed 24-25 school budget. This, this is just an open discussion. We will be talking and informally, you guys can keep your seat there as long as you talk loud. You may have to come up, if you start to mumbling, you may have to come up on that to answer questions. But this is a work, this is what we call a work session and trying to figure things Mr. Carter, this, Ms. Smith, have a copy of these?
This one is not, we have it emailed to you.
If you can try that, we've got some questions, Ms. Smith, that Mr. Carter's going to try to email them to you. Doesn't mean that you got to ask them, but it's just something for thought. That's what, just some questions that came up. And the Dr. Sears and Mr. Terry have a copy of them. So that they, and they were just given out just a few months ago. You've probably seen them when they come out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, I've already asked the other supervisors, so I'll ask you the same thing. Do you have an opening statement that you want to make? Nobody other than Mr. Quinn, he welcomed everybody here. Nobody else had one. Do you have, you have an opening statement you'd like to make?
I would just like to welcome county schools, I mean, excuse me, school staff, Dr. Sears and Mr. Terry. We, you know, I certainly appreciate you being there, and I appreciate the opportunity to have some open dialogue so that we can get our questions answered and we can move on into the new budget in a seamless manner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Let's just do this one at a time instead of around house. If somebody's got something they want to say, Ms. Jamison, we'll start on your end. You got any questions or comments?
No, not bad.
All right. Mr. Mitchell?
In fact, I'm just going to listen for a while.
All right, Ms. Carter?
Well, I'll just hit the ground running.
All right.
Mr. Terry or Dr. Sears, either one, I'm curious, how much do you anticipate being funded by state and federal revenue? And how much estimate will be your local funding request from the county? I know it's an estimate, but I'm just curious what your thoughts are on that.
Okay, if we stand up here?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
You make yourself comfortable.
Thank you.
If you want to stand there or sit in your chair, either one, you make yourself comfortable.
Thank you all for inviting us here today. And Mr. Terry does have some of the updated state numbers, and I just qualify this by reminding everyone that nothing has been approved yet by the governor. We're still working off of projected budgets. The initial numbers that we put together were based off of the governor's projected budget. Now we have a general assembly budget, which is a little better, but it has not been approved by the, by the governor yet. So it's, it's all still just, not guesswork, it's a little better than guesswork, but it's still just projections at this point. And Mr. Terry, do you want to give a rundown, just quick rundown of what those funding may also be?
Yes, be glad to. As we know, the governor's estimated budget was about $46.2 million. The current conference budget for the general assembly is about $2.5 million more than that. It's at 48, 48.7. So of that, there's a million dollar increase in funding for at-risk supports.
I'm sorry, Mr. Terry, I couldn't hear what you, how much?
There's about a million dollar increase for the education of at-risk students.
Okay.
There's going to be a fundamental change in how that is sent, those monies are sent to us and accounted for by the state. There's an 804,000 increase in the SOQ funding for a 3% increase. And then lastly, there is a, when we figure in the 1,468,000, which is currently recommended from the, from the county in support of the 3% increase, all of that totals up to about enough to satisfy our current budget request for the local request of about 2,845,000. So at least for now, with what is before the governor and what has been recommended by the general assembly, we look to be in fairly good shape to be able to fund year two of the compensation study, should the county continue that money. And I do know that it was proposed to be escrowed, so at that point, once the budget is finally realized, then I know you'll go back and take a second look at that, and that's fine. But at least what's on the table right now, those funds look optimistic to fund year two of the compensation study for staff and teachers.
Okay, thank you, sir. All good.
Mr. Tatum?
I'm just going to listen for a little while.
Ms. Smith?
Okay, all right, I'll just jump in. So Mr. Terry, with regard to your statement that you just made, that the new general assembly dollars are adequate to fund the second phase of the PACE study, is that independent of and at the exclusion of this 2.8, 2.9 million dollar request of the county?
That is including the 1.4 million that is in the county's budget, but would not require the full 2.9 million that the school division requested.
All right, so if you would break down what the request is from the school board, given the calculation, and can you just briefly give us just an amount breakdown of what makes up your request in terms of the 1.4 million carryover number you're requesting, et cetera?
Well, the 1,468,000 does represent 3% increase for all staff.
Okay.
So that, that's the difference.
Would you repeat that, please?
It includes an increase of 3% for all staff. It's not just SOQ-funded positions, which is what the state always funds. So their number only includes that staff. Ours goes over and above to include all staff.
So is that 3% in addition to the 3% coming from the state?
No, it's inclusive of.
So that's not new money that you're asking for, correct?
Well, the 1,468,000 represents new money.
That's what I'm asking you, what makes up that number?
That makes up all a 3% increase for all staff, which includes all teachers and all classified staff.
Are these the non-SOQs? Is that why that's made up for that one?
Well, it includes, it includes SOQs and everyone. If you recall, there will be a required local effort once we get the final calculation sheet from the Virginia Department of Education, and then we'll be in a better position to know what exactly the funding would be required with the funds they give us for 3% for all employees.
Okay, so the ask is 1.4 million, and we were looking at 2.8 or 2.9, correct?
That's correct.
And so that is no longer the number, the new number is 1.4 million?
That's correct.
And so the, in totality, that 1.4 million dollar increase is to address the 3% increase in salaries, SOQ and non-SOQ positions, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right, so given that, I know that Mr. Whitlow has proposed money for, I think, 500,000 in addition to what we normally do with capital. What is the carryover that you all have? What is going to be the breakdown of the carryover number? What are you all going to request of the carryover in totality, understanding that the majority of that was for the middle school age gap?
The, the 1.17 million in carryover from FY '23, we still have 445,000 of that factored in as stopgap funding. We think there's some potential for additional savings through the school closures, but we can't yet recognize that, so that's why we're including some stopgap funding, because we don't, you know, we budgeted that the savings would be $1 million per school. We think it will be in excess of that slightly, but we can't quite quantify that yet, because a lot, it still depends on the salary of the people who retire and some of the folks who are leaving, and it's impossible to put an exact value on it at this point. So we feel that holding 445,000 of that carryover to go as stopgap funding will get us where we need to be, although we're hopeful that when all said and done, the overall savings from school closures will be enough to cover the stopgap funding.
Okay, so what is the balance being, you know, whatever that calculation, is it being another $600,000 or so?
Yeah, there's approximately another 700,000, and that would be applied towards some of the capital needs. We have been in the process of updating the, the capital list at the request of the Board of Supervisors, and we have a good working document currently. It has not yet been reviewed with the school board, but it looks like our total capital needs, and this is including the, the proposed CTE center, but everything combined comes in at about 126 million dollars. And once we have a good handle on that and have had an opportunity to present it to the school board, we will forward that to the Board of Supervisors.
What is the figure, if you take the CTE out of that, what are you looking at? What's the figure?
It would be in the 50-some million.
Mr. Carter, is it okay if I go ahead?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Lori.
No, you didn't interrupt, I just don't want to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so Mr. Terry, I'm trying to get my head around this. So what is kind of still in escrow, as you, as you phrased it, is decision-making around the carryover? There is a 1.2 million dollar staff, staff gap funding, proposed contribution by the, by the Board of Supervisors. And so in addition, there's a 1.3 million on the reduction of secondary positions. So is that money, is that 1.3 million dollars going to fold into just your operating budget?
The, the 1.25 million that the, the Board of Supervisors graciously approved for stopgap funding is not needed. We've not factored that into any part of our budget. It is, you know, you all are certainly welcome to place it back wherever you were allocating it from. The 1.3 million from cutting the secondary positions, all that has been rolled into covering the increase of the LCI. So with the school closures and eliminating those additional positions, the school board has, in essence, taken care of the increase in the LCI. And what we're asking for is the funding necessary to do phase two of the compensation study, and the numbers seem to indicate right now, although it's still an unapproved budget, that the 1.4 million that has worked into the county's proposed budget would allow us to get there. It might require some slight tweaking on our part, but we feel very confident that we will be able to get to phase two of the compensation study with the budget that is currently before the, the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, yeah, I think that that's an important number for the board to understand. With respect to the capital, the monies for capital of approximately 700,000, what, I've read your budget a couple times, but would you all be parking that 700, approximate 700,000 in a specific reserve or capital reserve?
I mean, we have some capital needs that we were planning to, to work on next year. There were some expansions of a parking lot and a few other projects that were, you know, 100,000 here and 100,000 there that we were hoping to address. We put a halt on those when we were trying to work through the LCI issue, because we did not know if that money would be needed as stopgap funding. We would like to apply that 700,000 to some of our existing capital needs.
But my question is, would it be parked in a restricted reserve for that, those specified uses and not just rolled into your operating or general fund, if you will, that it would be, we could track it basically in a reserve versus getting caught up in operating?
Yes, yes, that, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you were asking, but that would be our intention.
Okay, okay. So with regard to the, the teachers, your salary study, we are speaking today that with your proposed numbers today, that you all are confident that you can fund phase two of the study. How many phases are there in the PACE study beyond phase two?
There are three phases.
And what is your projected cost of phase three?
I will defer to Mr. Terry on that.
Yeah, I saw that number on the possible list of questions. The number that we're currently working with, provided to us by the Evergreen Consultants, was about 4.2 million dollars to fund year three. And I think the number that you have on your sheet's higher than that, but we have undergone numerous revisions of our numbers with Evergreen since then, and so far, we've been basing our numbers, budget numbers, off of that study and feel reasonably confident that's correct.
So understanding how you are arriving at a balanced budget this year with the assumptions that you've made, how, what is, I mean, I've read, as I said, I've read your budget, what are you all pondering, if you will, about how to pay for phase three next year? It looks like to me that the, any monies, you know, you guys are, you know, tracking pretty good in terms of carryover and so forth. Have you all discussed plans about funding that phase three?
No, we, we have not discussed specific plans. We're still hoping to get phase two implemented, and then we can start having those conversations.
Okay, all right. Couple other questions, if I may. The, the amount that you all are conveying for the salary study phase two, is that number still a good number, given the reductions in staff for the beginning of the new fiscal year? It would seem to me that that number should be lower.
Well, you know, theoretically, yes, that would probably be the case. Unfortunately, identifying staff and the impacts on salary at this point is really a moving target and probably won't be decided until well into June or later, perhaps. So as we've discussed before, Ms. Smith, usually what happens is if there's any excess funds, we don't have spending authority on that. It carries over until the next year's carryover. So, yes, so that, that would be the plan.
And let me look here, got that. In the budget, in your budget book, there is a special education regional tuition line item, it's line 4721, in your book, in the budget book. And this, this, according to my read of it, this number reflects the school's portion of funding for CSA. Would that be the appropriate assumption?
So is, is that an expenditure or a revenue line item?
Yeah, no, it's an expenditure.
Okay, so yes, it's about 600,000?
Well, what I'm seeing when I look at those trending numbers is that that number is now reduced by 115,790. So my question is, is, is that number, in fact, what the schools are contributing to CSA costs with the county?
So we do a private day, a local portion reimbursement back to the county of that amount. So that is typically budgeted around the 600,000 level and has been fairly accurate over the last couple of years. But of course, that can also, year to year, be flexible also. So hold on just a second, let me get some numbers here. Okay, so if I am looking at it correctly, this is a projected revenue item, Obdico 4721, 457,000. So that is the state reimbursement for the regional program. And it's, the regional program is basically funded different than other programs by the state, in that we are reimbursed by the composite index on that. So part of that reduction does have to do with the composite index reduction.
Excuse me, I was trying to pick up in, in your budget here, I won't be able to do it quick enough. I was wondering about the number that you all will be carrying for CSA, for, you know, local contribution. Our numbers are increasing by over a million dollars this year. So I'm wondering if you can direct me to the appropriate expenditure line that shows the expenditure projection that you all are, are putting in, programming in your budget. the expenditure projection that you all are putting in, programming in your budget.
Ms. Smith, this will take me a few minutes. If you want to move on to other questions, I can come back to it.
Yes, and yes, thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I apologize if I'm going on too much with my questions. Let's see. My question on school resource officers. I am seeing some language in the budget that basically says, it looks like there's kind of a placeholder to talk about this, but it says "to be determined." An SRO in every school, this is on page 16 of your budget. And I guess I need to make sure that my thinking is current. My last understanding is that the school board had voted to contribute $300,000 a year for school resource officers, and I thought that began last year. And if my memory is incorrect, somebody please correct me. So I guess my bottom-line question is, in your budget, with the language you have in here, why doesn't the language have anything about the school board commitment of the $300,000?
So I think you're looking, are you looking at the budget initiatives on that?
Yes, I am, I'm on page 18.
Yes. So that is, that is a carryover from prior years, which we do keep in there, possibly to put more money toward the funding of SROs. But at this time, compensation is pretty much all we can find going forward. So we do keep that as a placeholder.
So just to make sure that my board understands, there is no programmed funding in the upcoming budget for SROs for the schools?
Not entirely correct. Remember, $436,000 is budgeted, $50,000 goes to the town of Rocky Mount, and $386,000 on an annual basis goes for the funding of SROs.
Okay, so that number is not being funded. How's that?
No, that number is in the budget.
All right, so I'm sorry, Mr. Terry, this feels like the shell game for me. I don't understand when you say that it's to be determined, but yet there's a, are you funding the $300,000 agreed-upon number by the school board?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, because I thought you said no when I first asked the question, that it's not programmed in, that you're focusing on teacher salaries.
Yes, no, the $436,000 is part of the budget.
Okay. All right.
I think what you're referring to, Ms. Smith, is the budget initiative, which is an initiative each year that we try to discuss whether or not we can fund more. And that was, the case this year was that we did not appropriate any additional funding, but the funding that has been in place is remaining in place.
Okay, the language is just a little misleading on the initiatives piece, because if it's programmed in, it's programmed in. When I read that, it just looks like the funding plan is being developed and that it's to be determined. So anyway, just a point of reference for that moving forward. The only other question that I have is on your health insurance. I know the schools are, of course, self-funded, and I know there was no increase, measurable increase, that you all are getting in the upcoming fiscal year. So my question is, when I looked at self-insured funding models and I looked at really how they're set up and the folks that are involved in advising the entities they work with, I'm assuming that you have an advisor, is it Blue Cross, Blue Shield you all have?
That's correct. Our advisor is McGriff Insurance Services. They've been with us since we put out an RFP in 2015, 2016 school year to begin the self-funded plan in 2016, 2017.
So do you all have, I'm not sure I was able to find it, do you all have a health insurance reserve that has money in it when you do get hit? Because you're going to get hit, it's just a matter of time. And we've had some years in the past that it looked to me that the school board got caught cold on it. And I'm, you know, from what I'm understanding and through my research, it appears that you all would be advised to reserve funding for those budgetary years when you do experience, you know, increased premiums because of higher experience levels. So could you give me a little, just a thumbnail overview of, you know, if there are monies reserved and if there are not, why not, please?
So yes, ma'am, if you recall, about a year ago, we had a thorough discussion on the insurance reserve.
Yes, sir.
FY23, we had two inputs. We had $271,000 surplus returned to us from our dental carrier and $1,169,000 returned to us for last year's operating results from our health insurance carrier. So, and also, we had, we carried over from FY22, a total of $1,264,892. So all of our carryover from FY22 went into reserves. And then when you account also for our current surplus February year-to-date, which is $197,464, we are essentially at $2,903,042 in reserves. And that is more than the required reserve at this time.
Okay, so it might be more than is required, but are you comfortable, if you all should get a 20%, 25% increase, I don't know what those numbers would be, but are you comfortable with that number in your budget?
This reserve is obviously based on, if we decided to terminate the plan, it's a 12-month claims reduction scenario based on actuarial results. So as far as the results that we had, certainly the year after we came out of the pandemic, was it worse we've had with those results? So yes, we're comfortable that that could cover it.
Okay, and my last question will be, and Mr. Terry, thank you for your assistance. My last question for Dr. Sears, if I may. So Dr. Sears, throughout all the deliberations that your administration and the school board have had, I can only expect, are you all going to have in-depth discussions moving forward about how to reverse your ADM to stop the bleeding, if you will, in ADM? Is that going to be an initiative that you will recommend to the school board in the coming year?
We have, we've been having discussions, starting when I interviewed for the position, about steps we can take. And so, yeah, it is an ongoing conversation. We're in the process of trying to set up a virtual academy to hopefully create some homeschool partnerships with families who might want to enter into those with Franklin County Public Schools. You know, I don't know that we can reverse the declining birth rate, though. That would, yeah, that would require, you know, something that attracts people into the area, more affordable housing, more employment opportunities. You know, I think we've got a pretty good plan to try to work with the families who are here and try to get some of them to come back, or maybe not as many to leave in the future. But there are still, you know, issues with declining enrollment that we're going to have to address in each budget cycle because the bottom line is, we're graduating more seniors every year than we're bringing in as kindergartners the following year.
Right, right. So I think suffice it to say, you know, I think that, this is just a statement that I'll make, I don't request any comment, Dr. Sears. My observation has been that the trended decrease in ADM has occurred for multiple reasons. I think COVID was really the hammer that led to, you know, I think unintended consequences. But I also think there have been policies put into place that have driven families out as well, that whether those policies are still in place or need to be looked at. And I would also hope to have a conversation at some point when we get past budget as to the school boards and the school administration's opinion on the environment for us to move forward with our Career Technical Education Center, no matter where it is, but the value of that program as it relates to an enhanced opportunity to bring students back into the school division.
Absolutely, one, sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, one of the key things that we can do is try to create opportunities for our current students to be able to remain here and raise their families here. And the CTE Center would certainly help us move that marker forward quite a bit if we were able to have additional CTE completers in career fields that would allow them to remain in Franklin County and hopefully raise their families here. You know, once again, there's still the declining birth rate, but anything we can do to try to retain some young people when we don't have young people moving into the area, we need to try to focus on retaining the ones we do have with the hopes that they'll stay here the rest of their lives and raise families here.
Okay, Dr. Sears, thank you, and Mr. Terry, thank you. And Mr. Chair, I kneel back to your seat and thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Mr. Quinn?
So during the March 25th presentation, you had these two slides. One was for revenue and one was for expenditures. Do you have the latest copy? It sounds like they've undergone some changes.
No, sir, we don't.
The new cap tool was just released before we went on break, and so Mr. Terry's plugged our numbers in, but we haven't generated the full reports or done any of the typical work we do. And I'm not sure that we will until we have an approved budget, but it does give us, you know, something to work off of.
So the one, if I look at just the revenue slide, the one change I think I heard was you were asking for $2.8 million in county funds and now it's $1.4 million, right? That's the most significant change on the revenue side?
Cause of the increase in state aid.
Excuse me?
Cause of the increase in projected state revenue.
Yeah, okay. And then on the expenditure side, at least back in early March, it was $98.4 million. Is that still about the right number?
Yes, sir, that number, well, that number would go up, basically based on the projected state revenue increase. So yes, but the total expenditures of 98.8, that would stay the same.
That's the same, okay. So Phase Two of the comp plan, that is comprehended in here, I think I heard, and what is the cost of that? I know you mentioned that Phase Three was 4.2 million, but what was Phase Two? What's the cost of Phase Two?
So Year Two, if you recall, was about $3.5 million, but we already had built into it the $600,000 for the 1% bonus for the governor's plan. So the net was around 2.9.
Okay. And then what's your strategy in terms of Phase Two? For example, it could be that you want to make sure no teacher is more than eight steps behind or five steps behind, or maybe all teachers that are some steps behind all come up an equal number of steps. Could you tell us your strategy regarding catching up the teachers on steps?
So certainly. Years Two and Three are the most critical. Year One was basically moving everyone to the new scale. And then teachers that were impacted by frozen steps would receive 1/3 of those steps in the first year, and then 1/2 of the remaining steps in Year Two and 1/2 in Year Three. So that is the methodology. So Years Two and Three really catches them up to where they should be, up to Step 16.
So you had 1/3, 1/2, and 1/2?
That's correct, yes.
But that's more than 1, right?
Right, right.
1/2 of what was left.
1/2 of what was left, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's, yeah, so it's really a 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 across the three years then, right?
So our percentage increase this year for all staff of the total salary base was about 8%.
Okay.
So that, most of that was the new scale and then some step recovery for those teachers impacted.
And then after Phase Three, which would be presumably next year, everybody would be caught up in their steps?
Well, everyone would be brought up to Step 16 that should be on that step because that was the last step of our prior scale. So we capped it at 16, and then they would progress to Step 20 in the coming years.
Okay. Oh, so one of the slides showed, I don't know, 30 steps, so there are only 16 steps?
No, there are 20 steps in our new scale. Our previous scale had 16.
Okay.
So this scale brings it to 20. There is room in the future to move it up should, you know, the market need demand that for a higher teacher salary. That could certainly be accomplished with that, but most surrounding school divisions have 30, but this is the first step in what would be a multi-year plan.
So once a teacher hit 20 years, that teacher would be on Step 20, is that right?
And that is the maximum in Franklin County schools for that teacher pay at this time.
Okay, so then if they continued on and they have 30 years, they're still, they're really frozen at Step 20 because that's the highest you have?
If the scale stays the same, but judging from the competitive pressures we're now receiving from other school divisions, if one county to our south is advertising a $50,000 beginning teacher salary, so they're not standing still. So I would anticipate the scale would have to move to respond to competitive pressures.
Okay. And then shifting for a second to the health insurance, when I, I understand you're self-insured, and when I think about the benefits of the middleman, if you will, you know, like Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Anthem, a part of the benefit they bring is the pre-negotiated rates, the power of them with pre-negotiated rates. Who does that pre-negotiated rate work for you? Is that your, I assume you have an administrator, even though you're self-insured, and does the administrator do that negotiation?
Well, we have Anthem as our third-party administrator, but we do, by doing that, gain access to the Anthem network.
Oh, yeah, and their rates.
Right.
Okay, okay.
And more importantly, their discounts.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, that, I'll go back and do a rebuttal, but I heard some things today that I thought I'd never hear from the school. Especially when you said they'd get back to 1.2 million and that there was sufficient from the county budget. I never thought I'd hear that. So most of my questions that I had were answered in so on that. But I do have a couple of other questions that I'd like to, most of them are just what your thoughts are. Why do you think there's such an enrollment, or such a decline in the enrollment, especially going into homeschooling? Is there anything that the school board can do or, why do you think that's there? Because, and let me say this, I know in Parks and Rec, you know, the after-school and the summer programs for the kids playing ball and things of that nature, we can't get enough coaches and everything to fill the positions. So I know, I know that there's children out there and they're going into private schools and to the homeschooling. What do you think's going on there?
I think there are a number of reasons. You know, the homeschool rate in Franklin County was already high pre-COVID, but it just about doubled coming out of COVID. I think the, my personal thoughts are, the closing down of schools was the wrong call to make and for public schools, because a lot of families discovered, hey, I can do this homeschooling thing and my kids are happier and it works well for our families. our family. So I think that's why so many families have stayed with homeschooling. I do think the numbers have stabilized over the last two years. We're not seeing the, you know, a mass exodus, but, you know, what our hope is that we can create some partnerships now with those homeschool families through a virtual academy that will allow them to continue instruction at home, but to participate in the extracurricular activities if they're part of our virtual academy, or maybe come on campus to take two classes and do the rest of it through our homeschool virtual program, or their own homeschool program. The school board did pass that policy last year. To my knowledge, we haven't had anyone take advantage of that yet, but I think it's an opportunity that we need to advertise more and try to, to build these partnerships with the families in the community, and, and make sure that the, the students are getting what they need to be successful if they go for higher education, but also making sure they have opportunities for the CTE classes and dual enrollment classes and things that we offer that they may not have a chance to get if they're just in a homeschool environment.
The, when you closed the schools up during COVID and did the virtual and, and all of that, and you just alluded that you was hoping to, how close do you think you are to starting that back, or is, is a part of that going on right now?
Of?
The virtual?
Well, we don't, we do not currently have a virtual academy.
But I, I thought I understood you to say that you was hoping to get?
Yes, we're, we're in talks, we're trying to identify a program that will work well with us now. You know, we're looking at two different virtual platforms, and hopefully within the next month, we will have some, something to roll out to our homeschool families, definitely before mid-May, inviting them for either an informational night, or to contact our homeschool coordinator to, to talk about the virtual options and, and what they may look like, and, and we will work with families, you know, any way they want to, to be part of the school system, but also to still maintain some degree of independence that they currently enjoy with their homeschooling program.
So it sounds like that potentially this could be in effect by next year?
Yes, that's our goal, is to have a virtual academy for next year. All of Region Seven, which is pretty much everywhere from Pulaski and Giles County West in Virginia, created a virtual academy during COVID, and it's been wildly successful, and, and they've been able to maintain, you know, they, they've had enrollment loss too. Enrollment losses going on throughout the state, but they have not seen as drastic of a loss of enrollment as other counties like Franklin have seen, especially coming out of COVID.
Now, if that comes to fruition, does the state have monies to go into budget for that?
No, they, they in essence are enrolled in Franklin County public schools, and they would be enrolled in our middle school, or high school, or, or one of our elementary schools, and that would be necessary in order for them to participate in the extracurricular activities. So they, they would be counted the same as a, a full-time student, because we would be, similar to how we do with governor's school, we would be paying the tuition for the virtual platform for that student, but we would also be bridging, you know, building some bridges with the families for that student to take advantage of some of the programs we have on campus as well.
Okay, that's good information to know. And this goes along, this question here goes along somewhat with Ms. Smith's question. I know the school SROs started, starts with a grant. When's the first grant run out?
I would, I, I'm not certain on that. I know that, that it's coming. First one has already ran out, okay.
First one's already ran out, when's the next one?
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, so there are currently three grants for school resource officers. I guess to clarify, we are in a renewal period of the very first grant, and so at any point, the way that the state funds those, they fund new positions first as opposed to continued funding, so at any point, the state could pull that back in an annual renewal. The, the next grant funded six school resource officers. I believe that expires in fiscal year 2027, and then the latest grant funded eight, and that expires in fiscal year 2028, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Now, has the school, has the school recognized any revenues to help offset those costs? Are y'all planning for that, or are you looking into it, or are you looking into the future with that?
Yeah, we have not looked at what type of revenue is available. I've advocated that funding for school security be factored into the SOQs, but that really hasn't gone anywhere. I don't think there's a large-scale advocacy for that, but it is crucial to have those positions now, and I think they ought to be built into the school funding model, and have advocated with our Senator and General Assembly members over, not just here, in my previous position too, for that particular issue. Just nothing has come to fruition yet. I will say, you know, through the, the board action of consolidating schools, it does eliminate the need for as many SROs by, you know, we're cutting two principles, and, and in essence, there would be a need for two less SROs, so there's an opportunity for some savings in the SRO budget there. But no, we have not explored any other revenue options at this point.
Okay. But that answers my question, so I'll open it back up now to the board for rebuttals. We'll start back on that end. Mr. James?
Dr. Sears, Mr. Terry, appreciate you all being here. I'm looking back as far as the step pay goes. Y'all have it included, that nothing in that budget, y'all's proposed budget for that, right?
Well, the, the step would be built in with the-
On your original budget, I'm looking at. In other words, when y'all do your budget, y'all have not included anything in the budget itself for the step pay, is that right?
No, we have. The, the step pay's factored in with the compensation study.
Okay. That, I've been looking at this, what you got proposed, it says proposed budget is 69 to 76. Does that include money for the step pay there?
I would defer to Mr. Terry on that.
So the, the funding model for the compensation study was basically based on a couple of categories of employees. There are those that actually missed either some or all of the seven frozen steps from, I think, 2009 or so, actually, there was one much earlier in the 2000s that we went back and captured, because there's some employees that did that. But there were seven years where those employees received no step increase. There are those also that have come to us in periods of time when they weren't impacted by the frozen steps at all, they've received one every year. Those employees would continue to take a step under the model, under the funding plan, but those employees that are recouping steps actually follow the model as I prescribed to Mr. Quinn, where they were moved to the step with one-third recovery, and then the remainder of those steps would be one-half each year. So it really, it's not as clear as just a step, but those employees not impacted by the seven frozen steps would receive a step increase.
Okay, but as far as a line item in your budget, do you, is it included in the instructional?
Yes, it, it's under all salary line items, yes, yes, sir.
All right. If it's, if it's included in your budget, why are you, we're coming back and asking for the 1.4, I think it was for the comp study?
Well, because it was part of the total budget gap of about 2.8, which included the increase needed, which was about 2.9. So, yes, it, it is all included in the compensation, it's not just compensation, it's also benefits, everything that goes with the compensation increase.
Okay. All right. There was a line on your study, I think, on the efficiency study, or in somewhere along the line, y'all were talking about deleting 18 positions. That was what y'all was covering a while ago, I'm, I'm going to clarify that, right?
Yes, do you want to speak to that?
And 1.8, it's now, it's not quite that much now, right? But you have included it?
The, the 1.3 for eliminating the secondary positions, that is all tied up in covering the increase in the local composite index. That added to the two school closures, added to the 445,000 of carryover funding from our FY '23 carryover amount. That, all that money is, or at least designated to cover the increase in the LCI. The 1.4 million, we initially requested 2.8, 2.9 million, but because the addition, the state is providing additional funding for, on, than what was provided on the governor's budget, we're now amending that to, to request the 1.4 million that has worked into your all's budget, because that will, that along with the additional state funding will allow us to implement phase two. We've done the funding reductions to cover the LCI increase.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
If I'm taking all this incorrectly, it sounds to me like we're just sitting around with our fingers crossed that the General Assembly's budget, proposed budget comes through. Do we have any idea when, I mean, that could be June, July, before we get that definitive answer?
It could be, although I, it's my understanding that they reached an agreement with the governor on education funding, but still, we're, you know, nothing's official till it's signed off on, so, yeah, I, I think there is a very good chance that it will go through, as has been sent down on the newest cap tool, but yes, there's always the possibility too that it could be changed.
And if, if they're not seeing an increase in, for their health insurance, that's, that's pretty interesting, I thought. Real interesting. I'd like to see how that works sometime, but not today, but thank you all.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you. Just going back to the Evergreen study, I think when that came out, they, they recommended five closures, is that correct?
They recommended three.
Three?
Yes.
What do you foresee in the future going down the road about another school closure?
Yeah, I think that, and this is just me predicting right now, but I think closing the two schools is, will put all of, well, it, it's going to put all of our elementary schools above 80% capacity. I think it would be, be very difficult to close a third school in the near future, but I do think that conversation will have to happen at some point, possibly for the next biennium, more than likely for the following biennium, if enrollment, you know, if the projected enrollment decline continues.
Yeah, well, as a follow-up to that, the ADM, the birth rate is still continual decline, and I think the UVA study came out and said by the end of this decade, it could be down another 20 or 30%. So I'm just, I hope you all in the school board are, are planning ahead for this, and we don't get caught up in something in the future.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think the, the current school board is willing to have those tough conversations and, and, and make the tough decisions when they have to, and I do not plan to let this fall off of our radar. We've got to stay on top of our enrollment loss, and if it gets to the point that we have to contract in our operations to, in order to continue to function and provide our students with the best possible education, then, you know, that would be the direction I would hope we could go in.
Sure. Well, thank you, that's all I have. Thank you both.
Mr. Tatum?
Okay. I'm not going to beat a dead horse that I'm not happy with the closures of schools, so I'll just get on with that, but my question is not so much budget as it is looking down the road a ways. The CTE program is something that we, the county needs, and we all agree, we need, we need a, a stable workforce to be able to recruit new businesses to our community. We need to be able to show them we have workers that can go to work. And so for that reason, I have, since the, many years I've been on the board, I've advocated for the CTE program, and still do. However, the conversation has come up a few times in the past, and, you know, we all know that CSA is a huge expenditure for the county every year, and private day placement, and, you know, we, we get these children in, and they're classified special ed, and they have an IEP that calls for a certain type of training, certain type of education, and if our schools don't provide that, then we have to find it for them, and we have to transport them and all that. With that said, have you all looked at, once we're able to build, or whatever we do to expand our CTE, and if we open up that space that's across from Hardee's, the west campus, have you all looked at any possible savings that we might, could recognize here locally by bringing, keeping some of those kids here for that special ed training, rather than sending them all over creation? Is that something that you've been looking at?
We have had conversations about that, and, and I think that's the direction the board would like us to go in, if we do have that space become available, but as far as outlining a program, we have not taken it that far yet. You know, it, it would require a lot of thought, we're, we're going to have to staff it before we put kids into it, so there would be an added expense of, of having additional staff to, to staff that program, and then trying to move the students in as quickly as we could. There's also an opportunity to possibly partner with some private providers and provide them with, with the space, and then they provide the services, and, and it's still more expensive than, than educating a, a student in a regular public school, but it's not as expensive as when you're transporting them out of the county and, and paying all of these different administrative fees, because we could continue to act as an administrator for that. So there are a few options, and I attended a presentation with a vendor two months ago, that is what they specialize in, coming into rural communities and setting up alternative-type programs, day treatment-type programs, and, and working within the confines of the school division to make that successful. So that would be an avenue we would want to explore too, once we have identified space that could go for that purpose.
Okay. Keep us posted on that, and any savings that you may be able to identify that that could create, because that just helps strengthen the need and the justification for the expanded CTE program. And, and, you know, that's, like I said, I'm not going to beat the dead horse, I'm going to put that behind me, but I want to look forward to the future, and I think the future for, for our county is going to be expanding CTE and training up a workforce that we can recruit these businesses to come. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I, one question from a while ago, your adult education for your GEDs, how's that going?
It goes well. One of the things I was surprised to learn when I came here was that we had done away with an ISAEP program, which is basically a high school age students who want to drop out, you know, they could enroll in the school division's GED program, and if they finish it and, and pass the GED test, then they count at least as a partial graduate for the, for the school and for accreditation purposes, and Franklin County did away with that several years ago. I would like to see us look at trying to bring that back, because I think we, we lose a lot of students. Now, thankfully, we have the adult education program, and, and we've had at least one student that left the high school this year get into that, and, but I think we could do a better job of our, our high school students who might be ready to, to take that step and go toward a GED, because they get behind their cohort, or they have family issues that don't allow them to attend school every day. You know, there are, there are students out there that we could better serve if we had our, an ISAEP, which is the, basically the public schools GED program for school-age students.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, you have anything? Or are you still with us?
Yeah, I was unmuting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only note I would add, piggyback on Mr. Tatum, the board may recall that we had talked about a month or two ago, about getting in the queue with the school board to have a cost-benefit analysis done on getting our special ed day students back into Franklin County, you know, in terms of numbers of students that we could identify versus the costs that we're, that we're paying for in today's, you know, environment, and then looking at, you know, facilities and what it might cost if we identify one or two options in facilities, and then attempt to, to provide some very rough estimates about what it would take, not only to staff the programs at the numbers that we have and would project for, but, you know, as an example, if we go into a facility, are there going to be HVAC needs and so forth that are going to come in on the front end? So I just wanted to remind the board, Mr. Chairman, that we've been talking about this, and I think, and Mr. Tatum, I appreciate it, and I do appreciate your prompt to Dr. Sears on this. I think this is going to be a really important project for all of us.
Thank you.
Quinn?
I have no further questions.
All righty, we're at the point now that we will- We're at the point now that we will, thank you all for being here and answering the questions and for talking.
Thank you.
We're going to take a break. We're going to take a break now and then we'll come back and discuss. No decisions will be made today, but you've answered some questions and we really appreciate that. And so we're going to take a break and then we'll come back in a few minutes and have board discussion. Now, for anybody, if you've got discussion on what we talked about or if you've got any questions for staff, whatever, whatever you got there. Let's start down on that end down there with Mr. Quinn, once we start it up here. Everything cool?
I'm all set.
Ms. Smith? Any discussion?
I'm okay. I think Mr. Thompson, Chairman Thompson, we're going to have to resolve hopefully today whether, I know the board have had some side discussions about whether we wanted to move to categorical funding. I think we need to decide that. And any other things that we don't agree with, of course, within the presentation as it's been amended. Thank you.
Mr. Tatum?
I'm good.
Mr. Carter?
I think I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mitchell?
I'm good.
Jameson?
Good.
Everybody's good? I think that for myself, I'm good. I heard a couple of things today. I thought I'd never hear from the school board. I'm telling you the truth, I did. And I'll, I'll say that, the- Mr. Carter, on, I know, I know you talked to the county attorney and Ms. Smith was talking about the categorical spending and all of that. Do you think it's possible that we can get some kind of a, an answer by at least our April meeting on this here every month spending or we? I'm, I'm very curious about that. That's not to say that we're going to do it, but I'd like to know what our options are and, and do, and, and things of that nature.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would say so. We, in discussions with Mr. Quinn, the plan is to have at least available next week for any possible board decisions on a, a budget for next fiscal year. So we're, we're working towards that over the next few days.
Ms. Smith, do you hear that?
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, I would just add in addition that regardless of what we do with the categorical or lump sum funding, you know, I would like to request that we work on getting quarterly financials on, from the schools at a minimum.
I'm not going to argue with that at all. I think that we need to keep a better handle on things than what we've been doing. And I think the public is starting to demand that. It was a lot of questions. I keep going back to my town hall meeting last, but it was a lot of questions when it was my turn. Ms. Torrance was there. It was a lot of questions about the school and the budget and the way things were going there. And so it was a lot of discussion there. I don't know if any of y'all had town hall meetings or getting ready to, but it was, it was a good meeting, it was a good meeting. All right. Seeing nothing else there on that. Thursday's our next meeting workshop and it will be dealing with Parks and Rec, with the fair and tourism, and then of course, the fire and memorandum of understanding with the Town of Rocky Mount. Now, as a caveat leading into that, Mr. Whitlow has a packet that he's put together with the memorandum of understanding that's in effect right now along with a couple. Chris, you go ahead and explain.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think the current memorandum of understanding that, that we adopted or that the board adopted a couple of years ago, two or three years ago with, with the town, we've shared that with you all before previously. I've just made extra copies for you and thinking, Mr. Quinn, you would ask maybe for some call data and so forth regarding call volumes and so forth. So our stats put that together. So we have that in a packet and may be helpful for you all prior to Thursday, maybe to review these again, the information. So I'll just pass these along and we'll make sure Ms. Smith gets a copy as well. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all we'll have from our standpoint. And then Thursday, as you mentioned, we'll also have additional information, Parks and Rec, Tourism regarding the county fair and for the board.
That's your question. It was brought, brought to my attention a while ago. Now, when we're doing these workshops, we can't, we can't do agenda items, make a vote, spend money. We got to wait till the April session.
Mr. Chairman, yes, unless, unless the agenda is modified, and I think we worked on that where there would be a majority present to, if there were any modifications or changes to the agenda.
We'll, we'll just wait till April, take care of that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. For the benefit of Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Quinn, could you explain to them, Chris, in minute detail how we came to fund Rocky Mount $90,000 per year and the other stations 26 because that question has come up?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Yes, regarding the, the funding of the volunteer fire companies and squads, rescue squads and so forth in the county, there's a reoccurring funds that we have for our volunteer fire companies and squads each year, approximately $26,000, if you will, for, for several of those companies and squads. That is what we call unrestricted funding. It's funding that allows a lot of flexibility. All those companies and squads, of course, are subject to county audit, so we, we certainly make sure that they're being spent appropriately, but it does give those agencies and companies flexibility and leeway. The difference being those companies, those volunteer squads and companies historically falling under the umbrella of Franklin County Public Safety, we have picked up, if you will, fuel, maintenance cost, line of duty benefits, in addition, insurance and so forth for the apparatus, et cetera. Rocky Mount being an out-of-jurisdictional entity, even though that company runs calls in, in the county, technically outside of the town, approximately 60% based on call volume. Two or three years ago, the concern was brought to the board from the town regarding that, their need for some of those operational expenses for the Rocky Mount Volunteer Fire Department. Those same expenses, maintenance, line of duty, insurance, et cetera. And so the memorandum of understanding between the town and the county was developed about two or three years ago, memorialized and approved and adopted that, and it, and it is approximately, that specific year, Mr. Carter, was approximately $90,000, but that was based on 60% of the cost for fuel, insurance, line of duty and so forth. That number fluctuates based on the calls. And, and, Mr. Quinn, I think you asked about the call volume and the call data. Typically, the last year or so, it's been about 60% of the calls maybe outside of the town boundary. And so that's how that number's arrived and that's really how that MOU is, is understood to be funded. So I hope that brings some clarity why the difference between, say, 90,000 and 26,000. The 26,000, of course, again, unrestricted funding used for multiple things, for these other departments and squads, but that, that ballpark average of 90,000, really, that's, that's 60% of the cost that they would have outside of the town boundaries, that the county really is already taking care of for the other companies and squads that are in the county, if you will, or outside the town boundary.
So that, that's really interesting. So if you look at those extra expenses that you're just directly paying for the volunteer fire departments, do you know what that extra amount is on average for each volunteer? Not, not specific numbers, but just what's the average extra cost that you pay for a volunteer operation?
I would have to, Mr. Quinn, great question. We will, we'll have to delve into the numbers. We can, we can look into the budget specifically for those amounts, but, you know, as I said, we pick up the fuel, we pick up the line of duty, the insurance cost and so forth. It, it's going to vary depending on the fuel because, you know, each, each department's going to have different, and so forth, but we can get that data. We'll just have to drill it down and provide some of that for you.
So, so you're giving Rocky Mount 65,000? Would you guess that it's roughly 65,000 or is it probably a lot less than that? I just, I know I'm asking you on the spot.
No, 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 it's, it's good questions. What, what they've done is set up a system, since the MOU was put in place, is they really invoice quarterly. So each quarter, based on the fuel, based on insurance cost and so forth. And if the amount of the call volume is 60% outside the town boundary, then 60% then of those costs each quarter are billed back to the county. And so we're reimbursing that. So it's going to fluctuate, you know, annually, that, that, that cost specifically is going to fluctuate.
I know. So that's interesting. You're paying 100% of those costs for the volunteer organizations and only you're paying 60% of the cost for Rocky Mount and that's equalling 65,000 a year, right?
Based on that memorandum of understanding.
Okay. And I, I know I brought this up before, there's always this focus on how many calls they make out of the area, but, but you have, all the volunteer operations are also making calls into the Rocky Mount, right? Because every time there's a call, three units have to respond. So every time Rocky Mount has a call, two outside units have to come in, right? So do they ever consider all the support they're getting from non-Rocky Mount volunteer organizations?
Not so much as part of the MOU and that funding formula, but in terms of the actual understanding, if you will, of mutual aid, I think it's just understood that, and you know, as you said, if there's a second or third due, the, the other company's coming from, say, Faram or Glade Hill. And so the, the information that we pulled from the CAD for 2023, Mr. Quinn, it will show some of that data and those numbers. And it's just understood that, you know, the, the companies back one another up when that's needed. And so dispatch will, you know, dispatch actually those units when, when Rocky Mount necessarily can't handle it on their own, but that is the right question. So I, I know I'm giving, throwing a lot at you in terms of numbers, but we can drill down more specifics for you with more data. I think it'll be helpful looking at the CAD data.
I know. It's just interesting because we're giving them 60% based on their calls out of the area, right, out of Rocky Mount, but there's no offset for the calls that are coming into-
Reciprocal, if they're coming into the town.
There's no reciprocal, no reciprocity, right, basically? Okay.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Whitlow?
Yes.
Couple weeks ago asked about the concealed carrier.
Yes.
Have you had a chance? I know busy time.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Jameson, haven't had a chance to run that down with our attorney, Mr. Quinn, but that is, that is on our list to bring that back information likely at the April 16th meeting.
That'll be good, thank you.
But that is on our list as well. Yes, sir.
Like you ain't got nothing else on it, right?
[laughing] Right.
Everybody clear? We will be adjourned until Thursday, the 4th at 3:00 with a meeting with Parks and Rec, Fair and Tourism and the Fire Memorandum of Understanding, Town of Rocky Mount. Mr. Tatum, Mr. Chairman?